Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, April fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We do not have those before us, so we'll defer those to a later meeting. Hello?
Wait, which ones?
April four.
Let me look.
I think you all reviewed it.
Yeah, they're April four.
On the agenda.
Dinted something for it, and she confirmed.
And she confirmed.
But it had never been, there was no.
There was no vote?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So they were, never seen it to be.
So you're saying it's a crisis?
It's absolutely not. Want me to re-submit them again for you all?
I can just recirculate.
I would say we should recirculate.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, I just.
Next item would be the minutes of May second, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have any comments or revisions on that? I've got one little spelling.
Yeah, what did I do?
Page five. On the vote, it starts with the vote by Mr. Holmes. This is for the thirty-one Creamery Circle Project. It says, uh, it's as a type-two action under SECA and waived the requirement. This is waived requirement.
Okay.
That's, that's it. Yeah, here. Other comments or revisions?
Nope.
I haven't got any.
I just recirculated, can we get my everything?
Yeah, I have to.
Okay. I'll double check, I'm sorry.
No, I can see, but that's okay.
Could I have a motion then to approve the minutes of May second, two thousand twenty-four as modified this evening?
I guess it just came up.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second, or the second by Neil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? No one abstention. Next item would be May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, and I don't believe we have those before us as well. So we'll defer those to a later date. We do have the June sixth minutes. June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, any comments or revisions?
No.
No.
Can we forget this end?
No.
If not, can I have a motion then to approve the minutes as prepared? Diana, second line?
I'll say.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Next item on the agenda is a possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. First one being Altura Solar, Nexamp Solar LLC. And we have a letter here from Ryan McKeon from Nexamp. Dear members of the town, of Goshen Town Board and Planning Board. Nexamp Solar is wholly owned subsidiary Altura Solar. As the town of Goshen, please consider an extension to its formally issued site plan approval and conditional special use permit through May of two thousand twenty-five. Due to delays in the landfill cap repair preventing Altura Solar from commencing its formal work. Following the board's approval in May of two thousand twenty-three, Nexamp proceeded to further diligence the project and pursue NYSDEC, Department of Conservation approvals throughout the balance of two thousand twenty-three. On January twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, the DEC issued its conditional letter approving the installation of the Altura Solar farm, following completion of the cap repair by Altura and its subsidiaries. In the following months, Nexamp consulted with Altura to secure sources of funding for the cap repair, evaluating contractors, and establish a scope of work that would sufficiently address all DEC's concerns and requirements. The process of consulting with Altura to address some of the issues above proved to be more laborious, more later intensive than anticipated. Funding was secured in May of two thousand twenty-four, and contract agreements for cap repair execution have been executed as of June, two thousand twenty-four. Currently, Altura and its civil engineer cornerstone are working with DEC to get fill-in port approval, as well as final stamps on the cap repair SWIP. While these approvals are expected to be issued within the coming months, the uncertain nature surrounding the timeliness of the issuance and the subsequent need for DEC approval, other set repairs are likely substantially delayed of solar facilities' construction deployment. In light of these challenges and our persistent efforts to further the project in the face of several delays, we hope that the boards will continue an extension of the site plan approval and conditional special permit issued to Altura Solar, allowing these approvals to be extended through May of two thousand twenty-five. Nexamp and its partners expect to commence construction late summer, early fall, but given the delays suffered by this project to date, additional time is requested to ensure subsequent extensions are not needed. We thank the boards for their consideration and welcome any conversation needed to further clarify the circumstances surrounding the project's status. Again, signed by Ryan McKeon, Vice President, Business Development. Sean.
I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, that they did also request an extension of the site plan, I'm sorry, special permit from the town board. And other than that, I don't have any other information about it, I haven't heard from them since your last appearance.
Okay.
So they were approved in September. Technically, it would have been six months in March, so six months from March brings this to your September fifth meeting for site plan only special permits with the town board.
It's September fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
They're asking for, to twenty-five.
They're asking for June twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with that, but is there any reason?
I, I don't know, usually you like them to check in and let whatever.
It's a sign of something.
They did say that the contracts were just signed, so maybe they'll have enough.
And they said they couldn't work out during the summer.
Yeah, no, I, I either, I prefer this September. We'd rather give them a whole year.
Keep it on the same six month track.
Other comments from the board? Not have a motion then to extend their conditional approval through September fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Neil, second by Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Next item is a possible extension, RVH Mulch Supply LLC. Letter from Lincoln Tully Engineering, Dave Higgins, engineer. Dear Planning Board members, you may recall that on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the Planning Board granted conditional site plan approval for the RVH Mulch Supply project, and that approval is valid until June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. We recently submitted the site plan for consideration of final approval, however, given that the expiration date is coming up soon, as of tomorrow. On behalf of the applicant, we respectfully request that the project be placed on the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four Planning Board Agenda for extension of the project's conditional site plan approval to extend an additional one hundred eighty days. If you have any questions, I'd like myself or the applicant to attend the meeting, or should you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, Dave Higgins, engineer. Sean.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Mr. Higgins, you recall that they are looking to also come back before you in connection with the wells? And I believe that they are working on that, but that will be an amended application, so it's, this one can get approval, I'm sorry, extension. When they satisfy the conditions of your approval, then this could be signed, but they're still limited on that well amount.
To capacity, until we get the extension. Comments from the board?
I'm repused, so I'm just too lazy to get down.
Okay. It's that kind of day.
Yes, it is.
That's okay, Neil.
You're honest.
Neil is not here for this one. Other comments? Could not, could I?
December nineteenth.
December nineteenth. Could I have a motion then to extend their conditional site plan approval to December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Giovanni, second by.
I'll say.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? And the next item on, for possible extension is Silhouette Farm, if you could fill us in on that one, Sean.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, after last meeting, I recognized that their approval was coming due, so I wrote to their engineer on June seventh, and he replied the same day that he would contact his client to see if they wanted to submit an extension. I did not look back from them, so if the board is inclined, I would suggest that you have a short extension, and then I'll try again to see whether they want to submit one or withdraw the application.
July eighteenth.
Comments from the board? Not, could I have a motion then to grant till July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, your extension?
I'll make the motion.
Eric, all in favor? I mean, sorry, Marty.
I'll say this.
Eric. The cleaner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay. Marty. I don't know why I'm doing that. Okay. I can see, yeah, you both have a tan, you know, it's not vacation. Next item on the agenda. One forty-four Old Chester Road, eleven dash one dash ninety-eight point six one one. We have an application for a site plan for a residential pool and deck, two point three plus or minus acres. Old Chester Road in RU District will make use six and scenic road course overlays. And who do we have here for that project? If you'd like to step forward?
Sure.
Just for the record, who you are.
So my name is Javier, excuse me, Javier Mercedes, and my wife Jeanette. We put in a permit about a few weeks ago for this leisurely pool, with a, a deck, maybe, dead of the pool.
Okay.
And some electrical work.
Thank you. Sean.
So, Mr. Chairman, you've had a couple of these applications recently, more so than in the past, so I think if you're familiar, I think a whole board's made it with. It's in scenic road corridor, the total improvement square foot is over five hundred square feet threshold, so therefore the application requires site plan approval. It would be a minor project under your code, so a public hearing for due discretion, and I will let Kelly talk about seeker in a moment. Really, the only substantive comment that I had was really just concerned about the proximity to these subjects, isn't it? Sketch shows it away, I just want the applicant to be aware of it, that it's there, and I suggested that it be staked out. The applicant does have a survey that shows tie dimension, so it should be a good point.
And this is going to be an above-ground pool?
That's my understanding.
I, I could just add, you mentioned deck, is that a possi, that is also a possibility? We should just talk about all of that now.
Down the river.
Yeah, show him the deck, show him the deck.
All right, that's fine.
That, that's an elevated deck, it's, it says fifty-four inches off the ground, is that correct?
Yes.
And you step down into a pool, and the pool will be the same height?
I think that's right.
Fifty-four inches.
It's thirteen by twenty-four.
Any original use, or just the pool? No, we have the mother decker.
Good, that's fine.
Good?
Thank you.
Sean?
That's all that happens, Chairman, I don't want to hear any questions.
Everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the plans. We're looking at an above-ground pool, twenty-seven foot diameter, I believe it was.
Yep, yep.
Fifty-four inches off the ground, so there's no requirement for fencing? Is any, are you proposing any fencing, or not? Okay. And then the raised deck coming off of the existing deck, leading up to the pool. Any comments? Concerns? Kelly?
So in terms of speaker, this is a type-two action, if I could have a motion declaring it to be a type-two.
Could I have said motion?
So moved.
Giovanni, second by.
I'll say.
Okay, that would be Eric. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Okay, so Sean mentioned that the public hearing is discretionary, so if the board wants to have a public hearing, your next meeting really is July eighteenth. If you don't want to have a public hearing, then it requires referral to the planning department, the county, which I have referred, so.
Okay.
I make a motion when we made the public hearing.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is waived.
Then if you believe, you can authorize a draft, you have a resolution for your July eighth meeting.
I'll make that motion too.
Giovanni, second by.
I'll say.
Okay, we have Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, so we got a resolution for the eighteenth of July. It went to the county.
It went to the county.
So the thirty days will.
We'll get it by then.
Perfect. We're in good shape.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, and we'll see you on July eighteenth. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You can send that to him ahead of time?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Next item on the agenda is the seventeen M Flex Building, twelve dash two dash forty-three. It's an application for a site plan and special permit approval for a warehouse and office. Three point nine plus or minus acres along New York State Route seventeen M, Cannon Hill Drive. By zone, the acre three floodplain, pounding street corridor, and water supply watershed overlays. And we're here tonight to consider some revised plans for the site plan.
Uh, yes, good evening, my name is Joe Fallow, I have select steam with me, the owner of the property. We received, uh, three of our four variances at Tuesday night zoning board meeting. Briefly, one was the front yard along seventeen M, the other was parking, uh, being allowed, I guess in the side yard because it's a corner lot. The third being, uh, curb cuts within six hundred feet of adjacent and or, um, across the street curb cuts. Those three, we received, the fourth, uh, one which was the wing, was for the, uh, yeah, sidewalk slash bike path along seventeen M. That variance we did not receive, although I believe that the zoning board is leaving it to the discretion of the planning board as to what type of, you know, whether it be sidewalk or bike path, you know, as your code allows.
Having the sidewalk there, because we're showing on the drawing.
I showed that, that was actually part of the zone, the, the planning, that was, the zoning board asked for that, to show how it affected.
That doesn't in any way impact the size of the berm, the height of the berm?
It dropped it a couple of feet just because of the width, you know, you know, you know, if you take it four feet away, so here, here, it was in about a foot.
Is that over the left?
Is, is the berm ten feet?
Uh, well, it varies in height, uh, I have, we've got some meeting on the gravy plant, cross section.
Four oh two, four twelve.
Just for clarity, which one, you say you submitted on a plan, which one?
I submitted it on the.
You new plan?
The alternate one?
The alternate plan, I showed it on, let me see if I showed it on the other.
About ten feet, you know.
Yeah, I showed it on the alternate plan.
Six feet.
It, it, the berm is exactly the same location on both plans, that part didn't really change.
Just the extent of the block.
Yes, and we're going to be putting planting on as well, and, and we'll have a detailed landscaping plan, as far as that portion of the, uh, of, uh, the berm goes as well, with the rest of the project.
You, you have, you have section of the plan?
Uh, yeah, it should be on the.
You mean a section of the berm?
Yeah, it should be on this, on the grade plan, which is on sheet two. Take a look at sheet two, the plans that were submitted.
Oh, yes, I see.
Section, cross section.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Sorry.
So my understanding is we're here to look at the two different alternatives as far as the driveway?
Yes.
To figure it out.
Yes, our preference, we, we got the variance for both, but again, that they're, yeah, leaving us the planning board. Our preference is to have both entrances using the one, the north door entrance, one, one closest to seventeen M is, is cars only, and the, the one further from seventeen M is the truck entrance. That is our preference, we did provide a second plan, uh, the zoning board had concerns about it, I think this board had, I don't know about concerns, but questions. And, uh, you know, so we're here tonight is we, we'd like to get that particular item ironed out, and then we can really finalize, and we have our SWIP about eighty percent done, and the rest of our plans, and we'd like to get that finalized, so we can submit a whole set and schedule a public hearing, that's our goal.
Well, I don't, we're up to the board, I'm gonna ask Sean for your concerns or comments, please.
Thank you, Chairman, so, um, on the two driveway alternative, uh, my understanding is that passenger cars will use that first driveway to come off of seventeen. I think the primary concern in this board was the distance to seventeen M. It does meet the minimum, you know, so, you know, there's no restriction on, on that location, however, it could, uh, you know, have some conflicts occasionally there. My understanding is the circulation proposed is passenger cars will enter on that driveway, go around the building. Uh, I did have a concern because passenger cars would have to either park from those several stalls around the radius, uh, because the primary parking lots for the applicant are actually off of the second driveway. So I had suggested that if they want to go with that plan, or actually they, uh, that they switch those, so the parking by the stormwater pond would be developed at this time, and the parking closest to Cannon Hill would be backed.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think you're gonna have passenger, otherwise, there's really no reason for passenger cars to actually use that driveway, I think they would all kind of take the shortcut.
Take, use the truck entrance.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to read there.
In terms of the one driveway alternative, I just want to call to your attention, besides the distance, uh, from seventeen M. In that instance, the applicant's proposing to extend the berm parallel to Cannon Hill. That will reduce some of the visibility for westbound traffic on seventeen M and the building itself. I do have some concerns a little bit about the site distance there, uh, and cars coming out, whether they can see, you know, other traffic on, uh, Cannon Hill. And I had asked that if that's the route that the applicant goes, then we have the flexibility to adjust that as you get site distance measurements. The board already talked about landscaping, I also want to just call to everyone's attention that part of your negative declaration that you adopted back in May. The applicant did need to warrants for left turn lane at seventeen M and Cannon Hill, and you advised the applicant in that negative declaration to apply the DOT in connection with that. So that is still on the table. Whatever driveway preference you have will not affect that, negate that finding.
I do want to make, I want to correct you to Sean's, your comments are very much, um, kind of correct, but I want to bring the attention that although we do prefer this, it's more of a, an emergency access kind of reason. And not many cars will go, will use that first either, because the main entrance on this particular plan, there's no parking in the front. So there would be no business almost for anybody to get in there. Anybody that comes here to work, the entrance, the parking isn't basically in the back of the building. So the main reason we discussed it, it's gonna be better if there's a reason for someone to get in, there's gonna be doors in the front also. If it's for cars unloading and loading, or people bringing in, or fire trucks, if anything emerges, you gotta come in, go turn around, crazy, go all the way out of the building, it could be like, it just sounds like more of a, but the main reason, there would not, almost be no traffic, even cars going in over there.
Okay, I, I don't see how the one driveway, um, alternative reduces emergency access.
It just helps getting around, it's for maintenance reasons, for snow plowing reasons, uh, for that kind of stuff, just for, you know, maintain and, or getting around the building. For this for some, for some reason, but again, I'm not gonna sit there and.
Those are the, those are the reasons that you designed that other, maybe you can explain those items for the board, for instance, how does having two driveways facilitate snow removal operations?
It's just very much easier to push the snow, you gotta push the snow in, instead of what is he gonna do with all the snow? He's gotta push the snow that way, this way, I mean, he can get around, we gotta bring it back home and work with, it's just getting out to the road, or from the road in, and that kind of stuff. I think it's much more easier, if it's for a fire truck, it's got to be an ambulance to the area, it just sounds like much more kind of, uh.
Yeah, but if you saw his concern is if, if, if this entrance for some reason is blocked up, there's a, there's another way.
A couple of trucks stuck or something, it's, I mean, it's, it's a long building, it's, I mean, traffic's not crazy, you can see what my other building is, it's not crazy, but again, it's just, we see it working, it's.
The, the zoning code talks about the separation of passenger cars from traffic, and I think both of these alternatives check that box. Really, just summarizing for the board, my opinions relative to the differences between the two.
I, I personally like the one entrance plan, perhaps maybe a little wider entrance road, but one, one entrance instead of the two. With signage as you come in or go out, directing the cars to the loop, and the trucks obviously to the back where the stalls are.
There's no reason to direct, if we do one, why should we direct cars to go around?
Well, meaning if we don't want the conflicts between cars and trucks on the back where the bays are.
Nobody's gonna listen to that.
Well, that, that's on them then, but the signage is there, some people, and hopefully most would, take that extra few seconds to get around.
Under that logic, we wouldn't put up speed signs on highways.
Yeah. Good point.
But, but with that in mind, and kind of tied in with what you're saying, it's more safe distance. I like the idea of the berm being extended out, uh, beyond where it is on the two, uh, two driveway access. So when you're driving down seventeen M, you don't look right into the building itself, inside of the building, it's kind of screened, but I would just taper that berm down as you get closer and closer to the driveway. So that, you know, you don't, you don't need the, uh, you know, eight foot or ten foot height, you know, to taper back and just come down lower, maybe the shrubs could be a little bit different, so you don't have a wall. Maybe the shrubs could be a little bit different so you don't have a wall of trees necessarily. Uh, it's just breaks it up a little bit, but it doesn't interfere with the, uh, site distance. The stopping line could be pulled forward a little bit so that when someone's pulling out of the, uh, complex onto Cannon Hill Drive, they could see left and right, you know, more easily, not being blocked by the vegetation or the berm on the, uh, driver's side if they're pulling out. I mean, that's my opinion. I'll put it up to the board. Gio.
Uh, I, I tend to agree with pretty much everything you say. I, I, I like the one entrance exit plan better. Uh, I, I don't like how far the berm is, is coming down towards the driveway from seventeen M. I think it should be shortened, um, for the reasons that you discussed and, uh, I, I personally, I don't see the benefit to having two entrances and exits from, from this property. It's just, you know, does it meet the criteria for an entrance into a driveway from seventeen M? Yeah. Apparently Sean has done these calculations and he says it does, but I, I, I just think it's, it's more opportunity for bad things to happen when you have that kind of a second entrance that really doesn't serve much of a purpose in my opinion.
If people are pulling out.
Yeah, it's just.
It's just one more driveway to have to watch.
Just an, it's more opportunity for something to go ahead. Yeah, that's, that's just my feeling.
Neil.
Frank. Fire department access. Do they need that fire department?
I think we looked at that, Joe. Is this the project where you sent the email and I?
No, that was, uh, that was, uh, the green wells.
Green wells? Alright, so.
But I believe this, this beats, either one of them beats it as far as.
No, but frequently depending on the size of the building, you have to be able to get it with a hundred fifty foot hose, two hundred plus. So yeah, the entire outside X area of the building has to be able to be breached by a hundred fifty foot hose.
Right.
I don't see the backside of that or the roadside of that building being able to be hit with a hundred fifty foot hose if you don't have that first driveway.
Well, they would, they would just come in this way.
This way. Oh, you're gonna come that way.
On the single driver one.
Yeah.
So this goes, that's insane there.
Okay, never mind. That, take, we'll take away that question. The elevation to the parking areas in relationship to the elevation of the floor in the building. Is that, everything's gonna be at the same level or are you gonna be smoked down there?
Uh, well, the building itself is, is a, is, is a slab, finished floor is all the same. And most of the bays, except for the very, the first couple are all gonna be at the same elevation.
So you can raise a lot down, the parking area down by the walkover is gonna be raised quite a bit then?
Well, mo- mainly what we're doing is we're lowering it, uh, we're sinking it as much as possible. So we do have a little bit of fill, uh, but we actually have more cut than fill. We have a fairly balanced.
I'm, I just try to make sure you can get handicapped accessibility into the building from the parking lot. That eliminates your parking lot.
No, the, the docks are, they're gonna be leveled down.
The handicapped.
Yeah, the way, when you, when we, you'll see the grading plan, the docks will be lower than the parking areas.
Okay. It's hard to see they have some retaining walls that are perpendicular.
Yeah, okay.
Frank, please.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I mean, it has to meet the code, right? So that's it. If you feel confident, then, then so be it.
Yeah, all, all of the parking in the rear are, are at grade as far as floor elevation, you're within six inches, you know.
And, and that last parking lot, that, it's the only one we're gonna have to do right now is going to be able to get, stay at that elevation. Right?
Same here.
The one parking lot that you, that we are talking about having you keep, which is the one closest to the walkover, I believe?
Yes, that's what I have, right, the twenty spots.
Right, so I'm saying that is at the same elevation as the doors then?
The parking lot?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, yes, generally, yes. I mean, the slope's down a little bit, but as you go across, it's, you know, it'll be colder.
I, I sort of making sure it be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Nevermind, screwed it up. They had to redo it, so.
And they're not. Neil, if I could just give you some numbers. On the, uh, plan that shows one driveway, there's two contour lines across that parking lot. Three ninety-eight and three ninety-six. So it's like an average of three ninety-six. And then sitting for it, four to five foot gradient.
Five, yeah.
Over distance.
Right, yeah.
Over that distance, that's a.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is a long distance.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the, yeah.
They can do it, that's fine.
Twelve.
The only other thing I have is I would love to have our, uh, capital consultant look at this in terms of, uh, turning radiuses and, and, and access for the trucks and the cars. Most of them would say about the trucks. In fact, will the trucks on, uh, the road have to go into the opposite lane to make these turns? Or will they have to make, go into the opposite roadside to, uh, come out? I just would like to have our.
I don't think we received a turning plan.
No, well, I was waiting to see which was preferable. We, we will do, we'll, we'll make over more. Uh, whichever one's preferable, we'll, we'll do the turning analysis.
Just, just to back up Neil's comment, that existing curb cut on the, on the one driveway plan?
Yes.
Needs to be bigger.
Yeah, and, and there is, there's room to widen it if need be, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, how, why do you want to shop like we have a thirty foot right now?
I'm not saying widen, I'm just saying when, if the turning ra, once we see the turning radius analysis done in that, in, in that driveway for the trucks going straight and or right, right, coming in and going out back onto Cannon Hill, correct? If we need to soften those curves, there's, there's enough real estate to do.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, 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 absolutely.
That's the extent of my, thank you.
I like, I like the idea of one only for a couple of reasons. One is the extension of the berm. So you can, you don't see, you don't see the building coming, I, I took on seventeen. Also, um, this is gonna be a traffic jam right here with the, with the two exits are. I can see something, one truck, car, whatever. So I would open up the curb cut and I would keep, make them, extend the berm down a little bit to stop people from seeing it and have one, have one, uh.
If I should go bust it back to that one.
Yeah.
I support the, the single entrance. I think it, it's, it's more practical, it's more aesthetic. And I don't, you know, I don't see people on their own using, if I'm in a car, using the first one, if I'm in a truck, using the second one. So, long story short, I, I prefer the single entrance.
Thank you. Sheamus?
Yeah, I agree. The single entrance is a, seems to be a safer proposition too than having people coming out of two different locations. So I would go with same.
Diane?
I agree as well. The single one is best. It'll look prettier too.
The board has spoken.
Got it. Um, is, the board's basically prepared to discuss it all, the, the alternatives of a sidewalk versus bike path versus, you know, they talked about, you know, hiking paths, you know, it's, uh.
Along seventeen?
Yeah.
Foot of the berm.
Yeah. You know, our pitch was, and I think it's kind of funny, I think it was a two-two vote.
It was.
So, cause they didn't, they only had four. And I know that the fifth person was going towards giving it to us anyways.
It was, it was, it was denied the first one.
Yeah.
It was denied either way.
Right, it was denied. So anyways, uh, but, um, our pitch as far as the sidewalk, those actual walking sidewalk, was it ends before the bridge. In the bridge, you know, we're not gonna be putting a sidewalk on the bridge.
It ends at the stream corridor, right?
Right, but it was one of those things where, you know, if we put, our pitch was you put the sidewalk into that point and then what happens? Then you're directing pedestrians out to walk on, along the bridge where there's no sidewalk, they're actually going that way. So, I mean, that was our pitch, but, uh, so I guess that's gonna be our pitch as far as a sidewalk versus a bike path.
Can I ask, so if it's gonna be a sidewalk, it's, it is where it's shown on the site.
That's correct.
If it's gonna be a bike path, it's gonna be out on the shoulder of seventeen M?
No, it would be in the same location.
Doesn't a bike path have to be wider than?
I don't think either of.
I walk.
I don't know if there's any.
Entirely on there.
I mean, the curb and the pavement is up here.
Yeah.
Are we talking about a turning lane at all? Because with the county, when the county fixed their dump section, they have a turning lane and then a bicycle lane and then lane lane, which never makes sense, but that's beside. Is that something that we may want to consider for, is there gonna be a turning lane going right in? Cause I've seen an awful lot of people slamming on the brakes last minute wanting to go into Cannon Hill Drive and that's what caused a lot of accidents. Not only people pulling out from Cannon Hill left to right, but also trying to get in there from the right because they don't realize it's there right away. So we were talking about having DOT put in a left turning lane coming down the hill. But maybe we should also have a right-hand turning lane so anybody that wants to go in there, whether the, the school buses or the flex buildings or, or the collision place, everybody would have to use their right hand turn to slow down to make the turn.
If they had a wide in seventeen M to accommodate a right turning lane into Cannon, that shouldn't impact the location that's being proposed for a sidewalk. There's enough of a buffer between.
Yeah, the right away.
Yeah, so that wouldn't impact that.
Then you could have the, the bike, bike path or walking path right next to it.
It's just a bike path to nowhere and from nowhere.
But there's a bike path to nowhere, the county section too, so.
Well, the plan is when future properties are developed.
But, but in the case like this, they own the land up to the Walk Hill River, which is a stream corridor, so they already own it. It's not being developed as a sidewalk through that area. So you're still gonna have an intermittent, you know, even if you had something on the other side of the Walk Hill, which actually brings you to the landfill. Um, we wouldn't have a continuous sidewalk unless the sidewalk that's being proposed now went through the, uh, buffer, that hundred fifty foot zone. And I don't think you could do that.
I think I can simplify this. So you don't have the ability to waive the requirement. Code says sidewalk or bike path. And the code does not have any specifications on a bike path. That'd be a lot easier if it did. But in terms of where it goes, uh, because this is a design standard, code requires a continuous green landscape buffer along the road. And then the code further requires bike paths and/or sidewalks be constructed within the landscape buffer. So they have to construct it. It has to be along the road. The only real question is whether it's a bike path or a sidewalk, and the code does have and or, so it could be both. And then I think the follow-up question is once you decide that, do you have any preferences on width, composition or anything like that that is not in your code?
Well, if, if, if there was actual sidewalk, does it have to comply with the minimum four foot width or whatever? Or five foot, a four foot width? Like, I know they changed over all the sidewalks in the village to the standard four foot or something for accessibility.
Comply with ADA.
ADA requirements. I don't recall what minimum width is right now, but I wanna say it's.
Is it sixty?
I, I thought it was five feet.
Which, which is what's being shown on the map.
Yeah.
Five foot.
Can you make the slope?
Oh, as far as the.
Going from one end and pop it to the other, can you make the slope? We gotta have them do stitch backs. We're not, we're coming to switch backs.
If I could just add something, because I've had sidewalks and rightaways where you can't make the slope, the DOT will allow waiver. Uh, you have to, uh, obviously complete a form and justify the waiver and then if it meets the criteria for justification or waiver, they would grant one. So if, you know, there's a sidewalk there and they require the best, the applicant.
I'm looking at it quickly. I think we're okay.
Okay, cause I'm not entirely sure that DOT has jurisdiction over waiving that.
They do. I, it's part of that process.
I, I think they, I think they're pretending to, but I, I think you can really.
Neil, in practicality, what happens? The DOT is the one that issues the highway work permit to the applicant and they will not close out that highway work permit until they come out and confirm that it meets ADA or you get a waiver.
Even if the sidewalk's on their private property and not in the right of way?
On their private property?
Which is where this appears to be.
Yeah, it's, it's private property. Right within our right, yeah, it's right inside our property.
You don't need to access the right of way at all for the highway permit?
No.
Okay, then it's just the ADA.
Yeah. Man, I, I seen them sidewalks in this, in the village and they're stupid. You, you can't do that one.
Right. And you have no issue?
That's where I was at. I was trying to get to that for you, but.
I'll just throw this out here. I had a, a project at work, a bridge smaller than that in Bergen County. They built a pedestrian bridge right adjacent to it, which, and, no, this is just something in the future that could happen. And it could be for a bike lane or it could be for a sidewalk, so just because it isn't there now and it can't be on the bridge, doesn't mean that it can't be accommodated in the future.
Gio. Yes, sir. Alright.
Oh, yeah.
What do you think regarding the, uh, provision of a bike walk or?
So.
Bike path or?
After, after Sean's comments that we do not have the ability to waive it? I don't think there's much to talk about other than, I mean, if it's not covered in the code, the, the, you know, the materials that are used and the surface and things like that. But if we can't waive it, I, I mean, I, I would be apt to waive it honestly in this, in this, it's an industrial area with the location of, of this site to the, to the heritage trail. I think people that wanna go biking, they're gonna be on the heritage trail. They're not gonna be in an industrial area on seventeen M.
Well, we're not looking to waive it, right? We're just looking to pick one of the.
Just a one or a sidewalk.
Whichever one is, is least intrusive to our environment.
He's in favor of both.
I'm in favor of both.
There's a maintenance issue as well on it.
I, I have no real preference. I, I could go your way.
I'll leave it up to the applicant.
Now, let me ask you a question.
Alright, I like that answer.
Yeah, there you go.
When we looked at, when we looked at the heritage, they were talking about making connecting paths to the park and stuff like that. They were talking about putting down woodchips, you know, as a path, a walking path. We don't have a provision for a walking path. It's gotta either be bike or something.
Either bike path can be.
I mean, can, can.
That is also through a conservation, isn't it?
I mean, can this be like landscaped as like, like turf?
Yes.
Leveld turf? Just coming out of the berm right in center.
Right, as long as it beats ADA compliance.
That's what I'm saying. If we had like a turf, nice level green grass coming off the berm.
Bike path, you added any requirement for bike path to have comply ADA? If you are not.
It's the right path.
Yeah, but we have. I think there has to be something that, if you look at the bike path you did for BMG Powersports, you did one for the crematorium.
I don't remember this. Yeah, I think that was just.
That was just wood chips, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That was wood chips. The, BMG was, uh, they were in concrete, yeah.
Oh, no, I thought the BMG wasn't concrete. That was paint, this little pull offs.
My phone's, anyway, it's, it's certainly solid surface.
So I, I don't know that we have one that's grass.
I think we're going in trouble for grass if you're gonna try to use that for handicapping.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't think that having just grass really gets to the intent of the.
Which is all we have.
I don't think, were you talking about a grass pad?
I, I was talking grass.
Okay.
You know, like, it's, like, it's supposed to extend to like the shoulder, but just level grass, maybe we start building up the berm. But just having a level pad of grass, five foot, six foot wide, just manicured grass.
I mean, you don't have a pass this one, that's for bike or sidewalk.
No.
I mean, we could propose something and bring it in for you to review.
Maybe not grass.
Let's continue that.
I think the woodchip or the gravel are, you know, something that would have a limited.
I see your thoughts right there.
Hang on, let's, let's continue.
I'm agnostic whether it's a bike path or a sidewalk path.
Okay.
Um, I want a bike path and I want a concrete.
Or asphalt, okay.
Is that all asphalt or you just what?
No, I want nice, beautiful concrete, like, uh, like the, what do you call that? The ATV place down the street.
Okay, they, they did asphalt.
All right.
No, is it? Yeah, I swear I can see it.
I think so.
I'm gonna pull up. Whatever they did drive by there, that's good.
We're obviously required to have one in or the other.
You're gonna have a bike path. If you put gravel or you know, that, it's gonna look like fracking.
No.
No, so.
I'm kinda leaning towards what she's saying. Something that's.
So is her.
She said, so.
Well, so I, so I think the, the board's a little split on this. Could we bring in?
Concrete, I apologize.
Can we bring in?
I was wrong.
Senator was white.
Can we bring in, uh, what we propose and have the board consider it?
Well, what are you, what are you thinking now or?
Well, we, we would like to, we would like to put in a, a bike path using either, uh, chips or gravel. You know, it doesn't have to be ADA compliant. It's, it'll be more.
No, you can't ride a bicycle on, on woodchips.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I'm.
I have, I have a stone driveway. Trust me, you can't use a bicycle on it.
Look, I, I think we should pull on that one right now. I think we can, I, I'm against gravel or woodchips.
Gio.
I, I, personally?
Yep.
I, I think we should let the applicant propose something and then get everyone's comments on it.
Well, he's kind of proposing it now.
Oh, he's proposing it now?
Proposing with gravel or chips or something.
Yeah. I would let him know now.
I'm in on woodchips.
I'm all in on woodchips.
I don't think we should have woodchips or gravel because it's gonna, unless you maintain it, it's gonna be a mess very quickly.
Well, we're gonna have to maintain the berm. I mean, it's gonna be a, a landscape berm.
If a landscape in the berm and letting it grow a little bit's a lot different than maintaining a path.
Hang on, continue the poll.
Well we're that's so it's kind of I'm 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 not in favor of gravel or chips.
I neither am I it's either asphalt or concrete.
I think gravel and chips would be unsafe weather conditions will change the shape and the color of the ground I mean something more substantial.
I think once this is moved down it's gotta be maintained.
Second violation.
I'm saying what's there turning cloud.
Well I don't know about cloud Mr. Chairman.
You could let the snow build up on over winter not using.
I don't see in your code any requirements there might be requirements in your code for maintenance of sidewalks but if this is considered a bike path I don't think that there's.
You could let it just uh okay use snow tires.
We're not a chains we're not a spike.
I already said mine yeah she said yes.
Okay so Joe it sounds like the board is not in favor of gravel or wood chips so it's a matter of proposing either concrete or asphalt or something just as durable right?
And then one other final comment which I don't know if we're really aboard with this but I we want I wanna discuss with you sometime about uh doing our well testing uh we're gonna be uh drilling and we got an approval for our well location uh we have to do testing for the health department uh but there was who was brought up I think at the last meeting that there may be some potential to do some monitoring as part of that and I just wanna know if if so what we have to monitor because we're gonna we're getting set to do that as well.
Okay so generally what's required is some form of monitoring because the purpose of the town's well testing is to determine if there's any off-site impact so it's not just that you have enough water to supply your property that's actually the health department's uh goal their testing so there would be some form of monitoring involved what the board has typically done and I think it's a good policy is they ask applicants prepare a test plan and then we'll review the test plans if they're written on the same page so I would say with your next submission if you're if you're satisfied with the health department then at that point I would submit a test plan to the next plan.
Joe is there any signage proposals on this project that we call?
Yes well now well now that we have a we know where we're going part of our plan our final plan set will include a signage plan and in that signage plan we'll probably have our turn our uh our turning movements for trucks and show that that'll be probably one sheet of the plan.
You know approximately how much water do you plant on diesel?
Yes uh nine hundred and seventy gallons a day.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Kelly Sean anything Frank?
No I don't think I do.
I guess that's all we could do for you this evening.
We'll be soon setting again for the next meeting the next meeting July eighteen.
Eighteen.
Tell you it looks like the pump that's.
They were like big world but now when you look at it you're like.
I was giving you a guess.
I I I was in fact.
Welcome to your promotion.
I said I was.
Good night.
I was afraid to say it while I'm.
Okay next item on the agenda Sean is a discussion on our next upcoming meeting.
Which falls on fourth of July and obviously won't be meeting that night the question is whether you wanna try to schedule a special meeting uh your agendas have been trending towards a little lighter recently and to be honest with you outside of Old Chester and possibly Cannon Hill I'm not unaware of any other applications uh proposed because the eighteenth.
Were we gonna discuss science of the soul and your parking?
They withdrew that.
It did?
Yeah.
Wow. So do we want or need.
Stay on their own property?
Yes yeah so uh just just to catch everybody up on that topic since you brought it up so science of the soul obviously when they were reviewed they did a very comprehensive traffic study especially relative to their national event uh this they've studied a twelve thousand person event this year proposing to have an event that's not gonna be uh twelve thousand.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand so so obviously not not as much they also were not anticipating as much bus traffic this year as they studied initially they had come to Frank and I back in March and said that since Amys is an operational could they use Amys driveway to help get traffic out of the site it sounds like a good idea but with traffic you'd never know you send something one way it gets to an intersection faster or moving you know so we asked them for traffic status traffic status was favorable for what they were asking but when we spoke to Kelly she said you know that wasn't approved initially they couldn't come back and have any approval uh and you know public hearing and everything else and once they heard that they weren't interested so they're gonna just stay with what was originally studied uh unless there's an emergency unless the PD director's gonna do something different.
Good okay so back to the other item if we had a meeting on around the fourth what do we have on the agenda that would need to be addressed?
Uh right now it's just that uh pool application you didn't receive anything today right?
Yeah.
Alright so it'll just be that pool application heard earlier today.
But we don't have a two third.
But you still need to through the up to thirty days on that anyway.
Yeah.
No today which still puts you close to the eighteenth.
The the problem I have is you don't have anything that I would suggest having a meeting with the third or fifth or anything like that the problem is I don't know what's out there that's gonna become an eight on the third so I I don't wanna tell you that you just one meeting defined and have six applications.
I actually want to show everybody that we don't have a meeting so.
No no I mean.
No I'm just.
We're talking about the agenda for the eighteenth.
So it'll just it just might make the load on the eighteenth a little heavier.
Potentially yes.
If something comes in on time and we don't have an intermediate meeting.
That's correct.
Then you just kick it to the first.
If we have to.
Yeah.
We still we still roll over the agenda.
Yeah can do that.
I don't wanna change it.
We we could still have it scheduled till the fourth and just have it canceled because that's our normal.
I mean I I don't want to make it on the fourth then.
Right.
Since it said it.
That's what I'm saying it's canceled we're not gonna change it to a different date.
Mm-hmm.
You know we'll just it'll just be a pass on that slot.
I agree.
So any motion to cancel the meeting?
Yeah let's do that because I don't know if it's on your actual schedule.
Okay yeah I wonder if what was or not.
I think we would have caught it when we adopted that.
Soon as I'm thinking it wasn't but could I have a motion then to uh cancel the proposed meeting for July fourth uh Thursday for the planning board.
I want the.
Marty second by?
I'll second it.
Sheamus all in favor say aye.
Aye aye.
Against?
Right now I just have those two agenda items for the eighteenth you never know what's working out there I just in the first maybe there's one other one that was discussing.
That's a whole.
He's so positive.
Okay so the eighteenth.
He's a pro.
Sean the flex and the pool the same.
Yes and flex is on his submission.
Right okay is there anything else the board wishes to raise if not got a motion to close it the meeting.
Now as a close at the ERB meeting then also uh I think at the town board meeting but anyhow at that time uh the supervisor stated that he thought that the local law number six for the building height that he was he said that the planning board was holding them up I thought we submitted our.
You didn't.
We we didn't right okay I just wanted to confirm that we did I thought we did and I thought we gave them a better recommendation.
It was like the really long.
Yeah I guess I know but but he said the last week two weeks ago whatever it was that he hadn't received anything complainable and I just wanted to.
Did it not an awful lot?
Yeah maybe it was something different.
No it was on the height no there's no doubt about that was what the conversation was.
I'll follow up with him and maybe it was misplaced.
Yeah I think he was gonna check with Mary but I'm not sure he did and so I just wanted to probably add it because I remember Marty then said that he even though we had all these suggestions we were against it anyhow but the second thing is at that meeting he also stated that uh solid waste law was not going anywhere at this point in time uh because the town board had not voted to re-draft it is that is that lawful but you know?
I don't know.
Okay as long as you don't know anything different then we're okay.
My.
No no I just sometimes you gotta get some things to do.
I have heard.
Okay good thank you.